The phones are ready to be transferred, so we'll take them.
Send a bring struck down to get it.
Personally escorted myself. Think it's the magic of direct deposit.
That's okay too.
I think he's supposed to be on there. I think, I'm not sure. Last I knew, she was not gonna make it, which I think that was. Yesterday. Alright, we have five thirty. Rex can lead us.
Greg Scott. Mark Cerber.
Present.
Ron Vaughn.
Present.
Brad Newbecker.
Present.
Jenny David.
Here. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
None more things came on, so.
Anything Commissioner Ron?
I'm good. No, I think we're good.
Um, I think Greg wanted us to add on three. A, it'll be item three. Just an update from Mr. Meehan.
Three C.
It'll be, well, we could do the, I put it actually at three, 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 underneath three A. We got three A, one, two, and then three. Any other additions or corrections? We got item two, public comment. This is the first of two opportunities for public comments. On December tenth, twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty dash seventy-seven to adopt rules of procedure. They include a structure for public comment. Persons who wish to address the board are required to comply with the following. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrictions on subject matters. However, failure to follow the directions of the chairperson will result in not being able to talk or being removed from the meeting. The board chairperson reserves the right to sound the gavel when the audience applauds or derides a speaker. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we thank you in advance for your compliance with these rules. Is there any public comment? Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment? Okay, item three, appointments. We have three A sheriff, Brian Gilbert, for three A one, the police academy.
Pull another sheriff here.
To the hot seat.
The worry about the plastic.
Yeah.
You feel like you're, you feel like you're in school?
Like the kids table.
Exactly.
That's the first question. Well, Paul's been working very hard all week on this, trying to get all our documentations together, and I think he did a very successful job for us. He should have everything there that was asked.
Well, you should have received a copy of the policy that I drafted up, first and foremost. The policy is based off of, that I came up with along with direct information from EMOC, which is a certification process. So I built that into a policy, also included in the policy itself, a copy of the contract that's been drafted, proposed to the candidate. So the second part you should have received would be the agreement. Based on the original draft, it was provided at the lead by Greg Meehan. Tweaked it a little bit based off of some input that I got from other sheriffs departments. Specifically, Tuscola County is doing, attempting to get off the ground with a very similar project. So I used some of the information I found in their contract, put it in there, I came up with that agreement. Between the potential candidate and the county. Should have also received Tuscola County's letter of understanding that they're proposing with the union. If we move forward with this, I would propose using something very similar, almost plagiarizing that for the union. And then you should have received also separately the breakdown of the cost. So what I've done in the breakdown of the cost, if you'll see, there's a pre-test that each candidate will have to complete. That pre-test is a reading, writing, physical agility test. They have to do that entry level and pass that, where it'd be considered to be enrolled in a police academy. Breaking down the actual expenses of the correction officers, or sending an officer to the police academy. Ninety-four twenty is off of the website for the cost of the school. That is the school plus some resources and equipment that the school does provide. Five hundred and ten dollars for meal costs, that's lunch reimbursement for the employee who was traveling to and from the training day, five days a week for seventeen weeks. We have currently three interested candidates for consideration. The next series of numbers would be their current wage over a seventeen-week training period. So number one would make twenty thousand five hundred thirty-nine at its current salary, and so forth down. I broke that down with the wages overtime figuring in, like mirrors, it will be a little bit of adjustment on that for a comp that sometimes those numbers vary from what I picked up so far, but but it's a very close ballpark of the salary that will be paid to each employee when they go down. During that, during that time, just during that time, yes, that's seventeen weeks. So I just broke it down. It's a forty-hour training week plus ten hours OT travel to and from. It's an hour to say. So you have six hundred in regular hours and a hundred and seventy hours of OT. The fuel cost is, is the one-time cost, depending on one, two, or three candidates that are set down during this process. If you send to the fuel, estimated fuel cost to travel to or from during the training programs is a one-time, not added to each candidate. I just added, for your information, if we were to start them at current entry level for a deputy, that would be eighteen eighty-four an hour. So that cost is about eighteen eighty-four. For an employee would be twenty thousand one hundred ninety-five. That's just for your information, I consider. As far as for replacement of the corrections, we have talked with Lieutenant Oger. He has a system in place where part-time transport officers are being hired in, giving some training for, as openings come in, so that they're ready to move into those positions and be, and ready faster to, to take over the duties to the open positions. We currently have one that's opening up on the twentieth. And just the update with the Robertoral Village, we still have with our current employee list, we still have four open deputy positions in the village budget. I do have the village budget numbers here with me too, that we can refer to, questions. I think, given given the training scenario, we would request two, as opposed not to send in all three at the same time, getting that road ready, and I think two would be quite a challenge. The timeline, if I didn't, July twenty-seventh is the pre-test. The school starts August twenty-third, seventeen weeks. That would put graduation December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. With the FTO period then, that occurs after they successfully graduate from the academy, that would put them on their own and working the road out the middle of March.
Commissioners, questions, comments?
We talked a little bit. What happens if, do they, if they don't complete the course, for whatever reason, do they assume their old job?
Yes, as part of the policy, I did build in that they have a reasonable opportunity to return to their previous.
And then that placement gets bumped?
That's.
Back to part-time, or?
Yeah, that's where it's reasonable. Can we put them back into the same position?
Get used to it.
Let's hope we don't have a situation.
We don't have a.
But it is built into the policy that they would have a reasonable opportunity to come back into the correction department, should they leave the training, for any, any reason.
And it's dependent upon why they left. I mean, if it was accident, injury, family, I know you wrote in there, family illness, so you know, their own personal illness. So there's a lot of variables. Or did they, you know, want to follow the law? Booted out of the academy. So there's, you know, a million different scenarios you can play, you know, so they're trying to make a reasonable accommodation to take them, you know, get them back in.
It's a union that, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta think of.
And we do have a unique opportunity with the recent study that was recently, there is looking at two additional staffing level, that correction is applied with that study that you all received as part of that, so. What's fortunate about this circumstance, if we did have somebody that didn't make it through type of thing, you do have that window of opportunity for filling those positions. Hopefully October first, to comply with that, so that is.
Along those lines, you and I talked just briefly about this yesterday with the transport officers, they're in effect like a bench, if you will, to fill in in correction settings. So they have the training, they're, they're ready to go. And how many of those do you have right now?
I wish I would have put the numbers together. There's four, three or four. I know one specifically was recently hired and is receiving some training with anticipating of swapping positions to full-time. The full, current full-time is going back to a part-time transport position. By their own personal request, type of thing. So Lieutenant Ozer tries to hire candidates that have that potential, get a baseline for them, start getting them trained in the corrections department, so that when openings are available, their, their learning curve is a lot shorter because they've already been exposed to some of the things involved with full-time corrections, so.
So our selection process is these eight requirements.
Selection process would include the EMOCs. They're built into it, and those, those are EMOC specific, so all candidates that go to a certified academy have to pass those. And then they also have the posting and the interview with the sheriff as one of the final conditions on being offered and accepted to take this role.
Feel confident we're not gonna have a future grievance based on this way of selecting?
I don't, I don't feel so. I mean, I wouldn't anticipate it. The lieutenant is the first level. Obviously, he has the direct supervisory experience built in as.
Your unions are based mainly on seniority.
Not the way that contract, way that contract is, they've got the right to determine who's gonna do what work by whom and in what order, so you know, sheriff is, could direct anybody to basically go scrub toilets if that's what he decides is one of his, one of his lieutenants?
I think that's a reasonable job assignment, yeah.
That's gotta be done, right?
It's gotta be done, it's reasonable, yeah. But I just don't, you know, I'm not saying that you gotta go to the top seniority guy first and say, you wanna wash the toilet? And then work your way down. Not saying that, or working your way up, you know, it's just that I don't wanna get in a situation where somebody pulls the seniority card out, says, hey, I should be there. I've been here all these years, and I should be there.
I don't see, again, with the contract, but it will be sent out when there is an opening and an opportunity, it will be sent out to all the corrections for an opportunity to submit for consideration, and all applicants will be vested against this policy for consideration for the interview with the sheriff, ultimate selection. So I'm gonna, along with the current contract verbiage and that process, I, I feel we're safe from, from a grievance for seniority.
Yeah, that was my, my question as well, Commissioner Scott, was, as far as the selection process, I think is extremely subjective, if I'm reading this correctly. Applicants must have a good work ethic, work history, and free from discipline and retraining orders. What, what's a retraining? I thought it said restraining. I had to read it twice today. What's a retraining order?
Retraining is something, again, like comes from my past. There is discipline and performance appraisals, and where you can get into a situation where an officer is placed on a retrained officer. So his performance and his duties is not where it should be based on a performance review, and you place back on, it's not quite probation, but it's retraining in order to get you back up to where you should be as the employer.
It's a substandard employee, and you, you retrain them to get them back to the standard where they're supposed to be at.
As far as selection process, I guess I was just looking for something a little more objective versus select, or subjective. Cause then it says a jail lieutenant will forward a recommendation along with a letter of interest to the sheriff for review and consideration. To me, I guess, again, it just seems extremely subjective. I just thought the selection process would be a little bit more detailed as far as candidate-wise.
I tried to provide for several levels of opinions as far as the, the candidate being a good selection for this process. So you have the lieutenant, first and foremost, has to, who's had direct knowledge. If, if that candidate comes in and there's performance issues or something about that candidate, lieutenant doesn't feel he would make a good candidate, then he's not gonna forward it to the sheriff, so.
But it'd be nice to have, if, if somebody later down the road at this, hopefully this program was to continue in the future, if, if somebody, say there was numerous candidates, we could show somebody why they weren't chosen versus why somebody was.
I guess I would hope that we would be able to show that through the job performance lieutenant's rating, through the performance of the interview with the sheriff to make the, because their performance, you would also rate the letter of interest. I believe I have the letter of interest in there. Yes, yeah, provide the letter of interest. So the letter of interest would be another level. If it's a two-sentence misspelled, that's not really showing.
Is there an annual, do they get annual job performances, um, evaluations?
In the works. That's one of the to-do things that I would like to see created, where there is an annual job performance. Currently, I've not found very many records of that. It's been done in the past.
So there's no, at this, currently, there's no job performances, to go back to say, this is why you were chosen, or this is why you were not chosen?
Correct. That's the unfortunate situation, where it's one of the things I would like to see implemented, both in corrections and in the sheriff's office, is that we do have those for mo, a multitude of different reasons. I haven't had time to start developing that program at this point.
I guess the only thing I would say I guess I would recommend is not to have it end at the jail lieutenant's level. Let it go on, but the, the jail lieutenant.
Have him make, if you make a recommendation, sign off, let's say I would or wouldn't, and then still hold it up the chain.
So everybody gets a chance to go all the way to the top.
And that's the way we, that's the way we. View process.
So that might be, yeah, take it right, right through those three levels. I don't think you'd have to go through your lieutenant level, but probably from your, from your jail administrator to, to the undersheriff, to the sheriff.
That's the way we speak things in the military. You'd, you'd make a recommendation to somebody, and then it either say, you know, recommendation approved, denied at the first level, then it would go on, and somebody you know, if you're, in my case, you know, if my company commander said no, then I went to the battalion commander, battalion commander could overrule it, which is the next step in the chain, and then I, then I would go to the brigade commander, so in this case, it'd be, you know, the jail lieutenant. And the undersheriff, and then you'd have the final say. You could override, you know, the undersheriff or lieutenant, or you could concur with, you know, but you still have your eyes on it.
Because otherwise.
No matter what. So you could say, hey, I looked at every one of these, you know, and I concurred with, you know, decision that, you know, my undersheriff made, that concur was the decision that my lieutenant made, or however, so just, you know, that way, you can also say, hey, I've looked at, I looked at everybody.
Well, otherwise, I think you, you're putting enough stress on the jail administrator, because the person, the applicant, is the word of, the applicant feels that he can't get above jail administrator, you know, because the guy doesn't like me, whatever, whatever, you know, whatever he thinks, perception. He perceives that I can't get any farther out, so how do I get there? I gotta wait till he retires, you know? So I, I think, given an avenue, we're not that big to, you know, the army's that big, and they're already going up that line, so.
Yeah, you got three sets of eyes on it, so, you know. Well, again, you have the ultimate say, no matter what, anyway.
These evaluations aren't done, but yet if an officer screws up, or screws something up, they are possibly written up, and lieutenant does have files on everybody. So he's got something to go back and go on, you know, it's not a yearly evaluation, but, you know, you would know, you would know what's going on.
You get, you get the animal's in there, and you've got the, oh shit, so.
Yeah.
No file, so.
I get it, I get it. I mean, I, you know, I do evaluation all the time. I mean, just annual.
Anything else?
We're done.
My other is, as far as this cost analysis, I mean, on this cost that you, I, I mean, I wish it was sent. I just got this today. This was brought to us in December for the first time. And this is the third time that this has been brought up, and it was reported that we had refused this, which we had not. This was put out for discussion. I wish I had a little bit more time to review this, but I did do a little research today. There's no, for the backfill of this position is not listed on here. By a rough estimate here, it's about fifty thou, roughly, very roughly, it's about fifty thousand dollars for one individual to go through this academy of what it's gonna cost the county. And then again, that's very rough, but like, looking at these numbers, it's gonna be right around fifty grand.
The numbers that, the way I see it is, is ten thousand for the training costs. If you set number one, it would be thirty thousand plus then the fuel cost traveling to and from. So you're looking at thirty-two thousand dollars for sending one of the value.
And that's not to replace their position in there for seventeen weeks. You have to pay, you have to pay for somebody to work their position in the corrections department.
Part of what I was kind of thinking was, is that we have the four village positions that are open. So do we transfer those seventeen weeks to start pulling from the village money? Which then frees up that money.
But hang on, I'm just trying to get a rough number, so everybody in the public can, can hear this, just so that we're, we're rough. And again, that's right around fifty thousand dollars to replace them for seventeen weeks, to send them to the academy. I'm here also, and I looked at Delta's website, it was ninety, or, excuse me, it was ninety-eight hundred dollars, but there was also quite a bit of equipment that was not included in there. They had a whole list, a laptop, a bunch of certain things were, but there was quite a bit that wasn't listed. So there's gonna be quite a bit added on to this. So then I looked at Kirtland's, just because right now we have this lovely village going on. I looked at Kirtland's in district, and it was seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. That's just for the in-district's cost, but then they had a pretty specific breakdown of uniforms. The total was, and then the mileage also was about half the mileage, it's thirty-seven miles from your guys' office to, to Grayling. It's double that to Delta. So again, I just wanted a, out of district for Kirtland is ten thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars, and you guys had brought up a class. That class was the, cause I briefly looked, is a radar class, and that cost of that is two hundred and seventy-five dollars, and that's the only thing that Kirtland didn't offer. So again, to, to send somebody, a rough estimate's gonna be about fifty grand.
That's fair enough, thirty, thirty-two to fifty, with the equipment and everything that you're talking about.
Equipment, backfill.
It's gonna be already at the office. Some of it, I guess we had to look at how much the candidate themselves is gonna be able to provide as part of it. We could look at that.
A rough estimate's gonna be between three and five, closer to five grand of savings with, well, with Kirtland. But again, I just wanted per, per individual. And I know they had a class starting in August, too. I, I, I just think we don't need to know all the facts before we make a final decision, but that's the information that I had gathered today. I think in this cost, we need to also, what it's gonna cost us to replace them for that seventeen weeks. But that's, that's what I had to add to that.
And no matter what school you go to, you have to replace.
Correct, but I wanted to see the end of, I mean, we're in district with Kirtland right now because of these villages. It's seven thousand compared to ten.
That's valid. I, I guess I didn't break it down enough to address those issues as far as the equipment or our evaluations, they come out of Delta more road ready than coming out in Kirtland. I guess I didn't evaluate that the only class is the radar, was my understanding. It also had the breath, breath test, the alcohol certifications. Those are all trainings, tasers, tasers. Those are all trainings that a road officer, if they don't have it through their academy, you have to then send up that train, get certified in those particular areas, taser and skin house.
Any else, commissioners?
I guess, let me just make a comment on the presentation. This is a lot better than I thought it was gonna be.
You worked hard at it.
I know we did, I know we did. As you can see, there are questions to it, you know. I guess my question to you, Sheriff, is you understand, after looking at how much work that he put in and, and the end result, that this is what we really wanted?
We work hand in hand.
And I just wanna know that you understand what we, what we are asking for and why.
Fifty thousand dollars, a lot of money.
Times two or three.
Correct.
Or four, or, you know, if we're, if we're using only that source for, for those four positions, then two hundred thousand dollars. You know, if we're using that, that for the, the source, you know.
And I appreciate this, but again, just getting this on the iPad today, when this was brought about in December, I mean, it's, it's kinda go, just a short, short notice, just to think of questions and to do a little bit of research, and when do you need, when do, do you need this, what's the deadline on this? Does Delta have openings? Was that confirmed?
Delta had openings last time I talked to them. I've been in conversation with the representative from Delta, who set up the twenty-seventh for the reading, writing, and physical agility, and then they are also willing to work with us on any applicants that we do send, as far as the application package, and that they have to complete as a candidate to get into the school. So we've talked to them about their processing, and there are still openings in that last conversation we had.
Which was when?
It was last week.
Cause Kirtland only has two openings left. I called there today.
Delta has openings. We've been in communication with.
So I mean, that was good news. I mean, people are going to school for this.
We have, we have all today. The twenty-seventh is gonna be after, it's gonna be after the next commissioner meetings, or next. the next commissioner meetings or next committee of the whole wouldn't be till the twenty-ninth to answer some of these questions. We still have all of August as far as the application process. Look at if they're willing enough to spend the money, at least for the pretesting themselves.
The pretest is something that's going to have to be done no matter what. And it's, it's good for what, six months? I think it is or something.
Six months or a year.
Yeah. So I mean, sixty-eight dollars to send two people. Certainly would be in favor of at least authorizing that.
Just to clarify when the meetings are, uh, next regular meeting, obviously next Thursday, but the next committee of the whole will be on August fifth. So the twenty-ninth isn't done.
We've got the extra.
An extra Thursday.
Sorry. Yeah, start on Thursday. So we would have to, committee of the whole will be the fifth to answer the questions and have another discussion about it. You know, decision will be made or would be the twelve for officials. So we would still have that week and a couple of days for the application process. If they have any openings.
If they have any openings by then.
Any, anything else, guys?
Hey Jenny, I have a question.
Commissioner Newbecker, go ahead.
Does this, uh, does this program have to just include the corrections, uh, department? Could it also be open to say the security officers or other employees of the county? Just a question.
Or even, or even just somebody walking off the street that wants to be.
We, uh, we would have to, we would have to look at that long and hard because we'd have to go through a whole vesting of somebody coming off the street. I mean, opening it up to security officers or other county employees. I mean, it would be something that could be considered. But with the corrections, it's, it's kind of in line with the law enforcement. So we would have to create on a process for other employees. We're vesting them and reviewing eligibility before final selection, coming from different offices or departments within the county. I mean, I, I guess that could be feasible.
Well, somebody coming off the street would have wages.
They would.
Well, that would be part of that selection. In my opinion, in my opinion.
Unless they pay for it themselves, for the county to pay for it, they have to be an employee of that sponsoring.
In my opinion, that's where the selection process should be more, more distinctive. It should say in there how many years you have had to have been a, a, uh, uh, employee of the county. It doesn't.
It does not say how many years. It could be a new employee that's established a baseline that, that is acceptable for selection if he or she is the only person that submits for it.
Right. But that's difficult to determine a good work ethic, work history. I mean, so again, to me, this is extremely subjective.
Yeah, but that's, that's better than bringing somebody off the street.
Well, it sounds like that, that's a avenue you can do it. You can bring somebody off the street, make them, make them corrections officer, and the next week you can put them through this process.
Well, I would, I would, I would say. I would say they have to go to corrections and within the year they have to go through the.
Well, that's the correction.
Asking how long.
Okay, but that's not in there right now. That's what she's asking. There isn't.
A candidate must be a current employee with the Oglema County Corrections Department. To me, that.
Certified one week.
It doesn't say certified.
Sure.
I don't know anything about that kind of stuff. I, I don't, but I just think this needs to be more, um, sorting I'm looking for. I keep saying objective, criteria. Robust. Does that mean?
Just throwing one out there.
I could definitely work on that if the commissioner would like me to, to work on those type of things and bring it back. Do the best I can with what information that we had.
You can answer most of the questions when you set it up. It's the best time.
All right. You know what I mean? Some of these things I didn't factor in.
Yeah, that's okay. That's why.
That's what this discussion involves.
Well, people coming in then may apply knowing that this is, this is run for growth, which I think is great in promotion. You know, if, if they see the criteria, they have to work in the corrections department for a year or whatever you guys come up with. Then they can go on to pay for, you know, that ten thousand dollar tuition is, is, is a lot of money. So this is incentive for people to apply at corrections and, and hopefully get promoted. Is that it on that, guys? Yes. Okay. Uh, item two under, yeah, thank you.
Excuse me, we're going to do a resolution so we can authorize them to get these guys to the physical agility.
They can actually do that now.
You spend their own training money out. We don't need to.
Sixty-eight dollars, they've got authority to spend that.
Well, in the budget line, the, the twenty thousand that was put into the village budget has not been touched at all.
Right.
At this point, so.
Right.
I confirm that before.
I don't, I don't think finding the funding's going to be an issue. It's just down to the criteria.
Good. Consultation with legal counsel through Michigan Sheriff's Association. I think this is you as well, Sheriff?
I'll turn it over to Paul.
Basically where I'm at with this situation, uh, we have two county attorneys, one whose opinion that we know, one of, we've worked with going through this whole internal investigation. A second attorney, uh, has been hired on behalf of the insurance company. Is therefore representing the county in the name of individuals on behalf for the civil litigation that is currently underway. Unfortunately, both the opinions of these two attorneys are complete polar opposites. Again, we know what we've heard and we've worked through with the one opinion. We've not had a lot of feedback to this point. I know he's in the initial disclosure phase. I, I think I can report that. I'm treading on some waters that, as far as what I can say in a public meeting, but his opinion completely is opposite of what the other attorney is. And in running the scenario past three other attorneys, their opinions, just on the synopsis and scenario that I ran past them of what's been going on to this point, sides with the civil litigation attorney or their opinions of what's going on goes to that effect. So we, we have, part of this process have reached out to Michigan Sheriff's Association, uh, you know, for training purposes and for some, uh, input as far as all this going on. Through their recommendation, Abbott Nicholson PC, uh, it comes highly recommended. They've done work for twenty-five plus years with sheriff's offices in a number of different situations, uh, including, uh, investigations and issues with commissioners and all kinds of county things. Working specifically with the sheriff's office. What we'd like to do is engage with them to complete this process with them looking out for the sheriff's office and the county as a whole, so that we don't disclose too much with all the different parameters that we have. We cover all the union contractual, union contractual employee rights. All those things are, have our eyes dot our tees. They're going to comply with the, the summary report for the commissioners so they know the final outcome of that. I don't know whether that would change Mr. Meehan's report that he's referencing in his last update. I don't think it would have much effect on that report. Um, from what I can tell of his update, I've not had the, I've not seen the contents of that or these other allegations, but that's kind of where we're at. I'm stuck in the middle of these very different opinions between two county attorneys, working in different capacities, obviously with the insurance company and the county attorney. But when I go out and do the scenario based on several other attorneys, they lean more one direction than the other. So.
Are you referring, I guess I'm, I'm confused as far as what you're referring to. Actions for you to take? I, I'm not, I'm not following.
Actions to take to make sure that the review of the investigation is appropriate, to make sure that any outcomes have the appropriate action timelines are defendable, uh, that all the rights are protected. And if we do get into discussions with the union, we have somebody specific with a sheriff's office background that will do that. I know that Mr. Meehan couldn't do that also, but given the differences of opinions, I have some concerns with that. And that's why we're kind of.
Can I jump in there for a moment, under sheriff? Uh, commissioners, with all due respect, um, I don't think anybody knows what my opinion is on the findings and report, um, that the under sheriff is working on. In fact, the inter, interaction that we had was less than eight seconds at a commissioner's board meeting where one of the commissioners asked, could certain information be revealed to the board and not impact the lawsuit? And that's been the extent of any communication, um, uh, that we have had as it relates to, um, the under sheriff's investigation, uh, and report. So I don't know how anybody would know what my outcome decision would be once I was asked to get involved and evaluate, um, what parts of the report are disclosable. Uh, clearly any disciplinary action is always going to be foilable, but there are other parts uh, of the, uh, report that would not be. Uh, but I have not had a chance, with all due respect, to sit down, uh, with Paul, nor has Melinda, to sit down with Paul and the sheriff and, uh, understand in a confidential manner what the report says, what the, uh, concerns are, what the protections, uh, are. And we would do all of those protections first. We would look at all of the CBA protections first before there was even, even one discussion about what the results are. But that hasn't happened. And, uh, I do know that you probably have spent more time talking to the Abbott attorney than the eight seconds that we talked about in, um, the, before the commissioner's meeting started. But, um, I just don't think it's, it's, it's fair under sheriff, with all due respect, to indicate that you have my opinion. You have my opinion that aspects of any investigation that is done internally or externally, uh, can be disclosed. But I don't know to what degree, um, we are talking about. And I don't know to what degree, uh, the, the collective bargaining agreement, uh, and confidentiality and the protections, uh, of, of not only Gilbert Junior, but others that may be involved that you had talked to would entail. Uh, so my concern is, is that, um, first of all, I represented the sheriff's department for the better part of twelve years. Um, and defended it vigorously and intended to fit, defend, uh, the department vigorously, uh, as I am permitted to do so going forward. Um, but, um, I, I think too, uh, I mean, if, if the commissioners want to get a third lawyer involved, that, that's fine. Um, uh, you can do whatever you do, but I would ask that you not do it based upon, we have a difference of opinion because I've not had that, uh, opportunity to have that discussion, uh, to determine what the concerns uh, and what the appropriate processes are.
Thank you, Sheriff. I, I guess I didn't think that my verbiage of that, and again, I apologize, I'm not an attorney, but I was saying what your actual opinion was.
Sure. I understand Paul. Paul, I know, I understand. You don't need to apologize to me. You, you, you and I think well of you and I think well of the work that you're doing. I just wanted you to know that that eight second discussion by one of the board members, and I can't remember his name. I think it was Craig Scott, asked me if parts of the report could be, uh, be open. Um, uh, I responded back before the meeting started that, uh, certain could, uh, could be disclosed and we would have to talk about that. That's all.
When I talk about the difference of opinions, I, I, I really don't want to get into how specific it is, but it is dras, it is drastically polar opposite. And there's a lot of questions as to how we've got to this point and should we have got to this point at the level it is? And again, there are different opinions all over, but I have several opinions that are on the other side, sir. And like I said, I'm in the middle. I just don't want any errors with this and I want this over with.
I, I guess my question is, I'm going to intervene, is the other attorney you're talking about is defending the county from the federal lawsuit. That is it. And that is it.
Correct.
We have Mr. Meehan, who is, is hired, that did this internal investigation that has provided us guidance on possible, uh, wrongdoings that his investigation found. So I guess I don't understand how, how you mean two opinions when they're two totally separate.
But two legal opinions that I've received from county attorneys that are doing certain work and that those opinions of what has transpired to date are completely to, polar opposite.
But they have different information. So they're, they, they don't have the same factual information.
Because the same information is being disclosed in defense of the civil litigation that has also been disclosed to Mr. Meehan's group.
But they don't because Travelers does not have Mr. Meehan's final report, which has a lot, as a lot more information than just related to that, that federal lawsuit. So, so that is not factual. They don't have all of the same information coming up with two different opinions. And now there's a hundred and sixty dollars an hour to come up with a third opinion. Doesn't make any sense.
Well, and I just want to add into it that I have given no opinion on the case as to what degree the under sheriff's report is discoverable, disclosed, can be disclosed, can be discussed, uh, and can be shared with anybody.
No, Greg, we don't have a copy of, we have not seen the under sheriff's report. We're just talking about your report that you gave us commissioners in closed session, which was a verbal report. That's what I'm talking about. I, none of us have seen the under sheriff's report.
Right. No, but I understand the under sheriff to state, uh, that there are, um, difference of opinions uh, from the other lawyers that he has spoken to about what can be done, should be done and will be done as it relates to the investigation that he has completed and provided to the sheriff. Uh, and that then spawned, uh, getting the sheriff's association involved to see if they could give the sheriff direction, which is I think a good thing. And that, uh, then spawned, uh, going and being directed to Abbott, Abbott Nicholson, uh, which I know them very well. My, my problem is that the procedural issues have never been discussed or engaged uh, with me in terms of the confidentiality, the protections under this CBA and the protections of people that may be involved in the discussion. Number two, I've never been asked to give an opinion, uh, to the sheriff or to the board as it relates to the under sheriff's opinion as to whether or not the results in any form or fashion uh, can be disclosed publicly. Number three, I've never been asked, um, what the, uh, ability for a FOIA request or any other type of request, um, is available, uh, to the public. And finally, I've never been asked to what degree and what extent can the commissioners or the public be made aware of the final decision, um, that the under sheriff has come about? What I was asked in a very brief eight second communication as to whether or not material involved in the under sheriff's, um, um, investigation can be disclosed to the commissioners and what would be the protections that would be necessary and needed for purposes of protecting the lawsuit, protecting the individuals and protecting everyone else. And that is what I have been.
Greg, did you see the, the report from the under sheriff, their, their internal investigation?
No, I have not seen anything.
My other question, I understand the unions makes things a little bit more complex, but I mean, uh, if a crime's been committed, a crime is a crime. Does a unit, and I don't know, I don't know the answer to this, so that's why I'm asking. If a crime has been committed, i- isn't the union's kind of out, out the window? I mean, I mean, wrong is wrong, a crime is a crime. I, I, am I wrong there?
Are you going to answer, Greg, or you want me to answer?
I don't care who answers, I guess. I don't know the answer. Greg?
Go ahead, under sheriff.
Okay. Uh, at, at this point, it's not a criminal investigation that I'm conducting or that is part of it. It's a violation of any standard operating procedures or policies. That is what I'm doing. The criminal aspect of this situation has already been declined by the special prosecutor here in that county. And it's also been declined by the attorney general's office, and that's directly from my contact with the detective. directly from my contact with the detective sergeant that did the original criminal investigation. So all I'm doing, all that I have been involved in is the departmental, is any of that a violation of the standard operating procedures or policies of the Ogdenwall County Sheriff's Department? If there's violations, what are those violations, and what is the discipline that would be handed out? That's what I'm currently doing.
It was, if, if I'm not misunderstanding, which I could be, it was declined from the Attorney General's Office before they had all the information. All they had was that FOIA report that went to the prosecuting attorney. They did not have our internal investigation report. So, yes, what you said is, is partially true, but, but not total. They did not have all the information to totally decline the case at this point.
That's fair enough.
What's your guys' commissioners' thoughts on this $160 an hour from Abbott and Nicholson? Commissioner Scott?
Oh, I'd, I'd like to hear from the, I'd like to hear from the other two first. That's why they're here. They're here to support the sheriff's department. I mean, that's clearly why they ran for office even. So I'd really like to hear what they're talking about. I mean, the elephant in the room knows this every, every, every meeting we have, and I'd really like.
They said it.
At this point, right now.
I agree with you. They both said it.
Lobby for the sheriff's department. I'd really like to hear your.
I would like to say this before, and I agree, but they both said in the closed session and heard what our attorney found. So go ahead.
But what I'm hearing here, again, you have two opinions. You know, we all want it done and over with.
Agreed. We want it done. We want it done correctly, and we want to move forward. Agreed.
So the bottom line is, is since one prosecutor wouldn't prosecute, that means that everybody's not guilty. Well, wait a minute. This, this is the word that's getting out. Okay? This is what we had streams of public comment about. Already, they came right up there. They told us, they told us that because he didn't, because nobody got prosecuted, they're not guilty. And then the other stream was that he wasn't sheriff then. So once you get a new sheriff, clean slate for everybody. You know? Hey, wait a minute. Wait a minute. If this happened to me, if this happened to my brother, this happened to my neighbor, would it be different? That's what I want to know. Would it be different?
Can I suggest the solution to everyone that will be very easy to do?
Can you hang on for just a minute, Greg? I'm, I'm sorry. Mr. Silver, or Commissioner Silver, can, can you state your opinion?
My opinion is, number one, just because prosecutor declined to prosecute doesn't mean somebody's not guilty. Just means they didn't get charged criminally. Pure and simple. Happens all the time. The only way you're not guilty is if you go to trial and are found not guilty. All right? So there is no guilt or innocence at this point, because it never went to trial. He never got charged. It never went to trial. All right? Number two, I guess my question is, do you just want this attorney to review your internal investigation, make a recommendation where they might spend an hour or two hours on it, or is this going to be a whole nother internal investigation? You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't object to just getting a second or third opinion, whatever it might be, for, you know, two hours worth of work, 320 bucks. I don't have a problem with that. Now, if we're talking, you know, much more than that, then I do have an issue with it, quite frankly.
Agreed, but we're talking two separate opinions, and nobody's got all the information.
And that's why I think.
A lot of the facts on the table.
It all needs to come together, so that everything's there. The criminal investigation, Mr. Meehan's, and whatever the, our county civil, whatever they've got. You know, maybe if we can, and Greg started to, you know, say, hey, I've got a possible solution, so why don't we, why don't we hear from him and see what, what he has got to say? He's, you know, they're the attorneys. We're certainly not.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes. So my solution to this problem would be for myself and the undersheriff and the sheriff to meet and to address the procedural concerns and issues that they have, the confidentiality and the constitutionality concerns that they have before there's even one discussion about what the results are. And thirdly, once we are able to have those discussions and rid ourselves of whether there truly is three different opinions or two different opinions or whatever, we can then report back to the commissioners and move forward in an appropriate manner. I suspect what you're going to find out is that the opinions are all aligned when all of the information that may have been shared with the insurance guy and shared with Abbott is shared with us. I suspect also that when they are provided information that I can provide in terms of case law and disclose, disclosing requirements, that they will also agree with that, and we can come to a very easy decision-making process by which how we handle this. And I think it could be done very quickly and very effectively. And, you know, I can come out and meet with the undersheriff and the sheriff tomorrow if that would make things go quickly. And this way, then, there would be no concern about me knowing what the results of their report is. They don't know the results of my report. And by the way, I don't give opinions when I wrote what I wrote. I wrote what was factually presented to me by the people that I had interviewed. So there was no determination like the undersheriff had done by me as to right, wrong, or who should go here and what should be done. I simply reported a factual report from the witnesses and the people that have become. So there is a lot of confusion that I think I can resolve with the undersheriff and the sheriff tomorrow in a meeting or Monday, in a meeting, whenever it is, before they even have to worry about disclosing the report. That's my suggestion.
Are you guys willing to do that?
Checking my calendar. Please, just one moment.
Yep.
And undersheriff, I've got really both days tomorrow and Monday more than anything else, and Tuesday open all next week, so I can accommodate whatever challenges and, and things you have to do, given your job.
I'll contact you tomorrow. We'll set something up on Monday.
That would work perfectly, sir.
I would like Tim, Tim, can Tim be present for that meeting?
The only thing, the why I wouldn't want Tim present at the meeting, it would potentially breach the attorney-client relationship. But if you would let me think about this for a few moments, I can report back to the commissioners tomorrow as to whether Tim's presence would be secured, so it would not breach the attorney-client privilege. And if that's the case, of course, I think he should be there. But I, again, don't want to compromise the system, and I don't want some uncanny lawyer to get a hold of what we're trying to do in the right way and to protect everybody's interests to do that. So I just need some time to think about this, if you don't mind, Commissioner.
Anything else? Sure. Thanks, guys. 3B, Greg, were you, was that part of your update, I guess?
That's part of my update. And then the only other two things that I would like to bring to the attention of the board is, again, because I have not received the undersheriff's report, or at least information as it relates to that report, my report still has the last paragraph that talks about what the undersheriff internal investigation has found. So I will still hold on to my final report to get to you, commissioners, as soon as we get this issue with the undersheriff resolved on Monday. All right? And then secondarily, there is some information that I had hoped to confirm prior to this call. There was some evidence to indicate that there is some ongoing litigation involving the very issues that we are talking about. And there has been some requests for two of the individuals and possibly the insurance company involved in this, but I could not get the court clerk who left at four o'clock to confirm with me in the filings. So I would, out of respect to all of the parties, ask that you let me, let, let's end my conversation at that point. But by tomorrow morning, by 10, I'll show, should have the documentation that would support some, this additional action. And I will forward copies of all of that, which is a public record to each and every commissioner.
Do you guys have any questions for Mr. Meehan?
No.
Commissioners. Thanks. Mr. Meehan, were you going to stay on the phone? Because we've got a KCC mileage down the agenda a bit. So can you stay on the phone if you don't mind?
I will stay on the phone. I'm just going to pick up my daughter, so I'll keep the camera off and I'll keep the volume off. And then just, you may have to say twice my name, but I've got to pick her up from the last scan that they're doing on her leg in terms of the skating accident. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
3B, we have Carol Gilman, Director of County Commission on Aging.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for having me.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you? Draw two things here for your information. If you don't want it to pass these out. Can you pull more information? I feel like I'm the witness standing.
Thank you.
Sorry, you get one more.
Thank you. There you go. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. It's our newsletter, and I've got your understanding statement, so it may help more for people to understand. This is something that happens every three years. The community plan comes up, and they send the request to the county clerk's office for, to go through that you designate the Ogdenwall Commission on Aging as the agency to handle the affairs for seniors in our county, which is the core programs, which would be homemaking, personal care, respite, home-delivered meals, et cetera, and congregant. So.
Thank you. No, you guys, you guys did a lot during the, with all the restrictions and everything, you know, handing out curbside meals. And I, I had a lot of individuals still utilizing your services in this past year, which was extremely complex. So you guys did a very good job.
We were very fortunate to be able to continue the services even with the COVID, and nobody was left without anything. That was in the home also, and our adult day services too.
Are you having difficult time finding workers, like to go into the homes?
A little bit, a little bit. Although, none of my people left. Nobody was laid off, and everybody's currently working. But we do need, we do need an assistant cook, if anybody is.
See what she's looking at. Yeah.
We need to take, get a resolution.
Yes.
For approval.
I have no questions. So please. That's what you need from us, is just a resolution?
Resolution, and Brick has that, I believe, that they requested, and I sent a copy of what we need.
I read that whole draft thing over. Oh, my God. And it's a lot of information trying to digest. It's like, what, 43 pages long, I think it was? It was like, holy smokes. But I'm very thorough. I was, but.
A lot of individuals use your services, and, and they were lost for a period of time when you guys were shut down, as far as not being able to go into. Yes.
They actually brought their own tables and sat outside and played cards.
Is that it?
That it?
Well, I see meatloafs next to it. I'll tell you, Thursdays are the day. Trust me. Thursdays are the day to eat.
The greatest one is liver and onions that people come up with.
I don't, I don't, I don't have any questions. No, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much.
I think I know where I want to start going from.
Oh, yeah.
I have, I.
I've been in there as well.
I did, I did the old drive-through a few times on Thursdays.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
See ya.
Discussion items for a Mills Township abandoned properties.
Didn't include in the iPad memorandum that Registered Ds put together, which was very helpful.
Very interesting.
It was.
It's your property.
That's what I got out of it.
Exactly.
Is that in the email?
It should be.
It's a.
It's from Denise.
Yeah, it's from Denise.
Oh, then.
It's in the land banks.
Oh, right here.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I got it.
If you slide that over.
Yeah.
You smell.
So I guess I had a question on that. It said 50/50. I mean, is this going to have to be something in an agreement? One of the other options was something about splitting it 50.
That was at the end, when it went through both sales, and it automatically goes back to the township. And then if the township has until December 1st, they can decline it. Then it goes to the land bank. And then the land bank and the township could discuss it and maybe share cost.
Oh.
It says a 50/50 split on the cost of cleanup.
That was a suggestion by the person I talked to.
Do you have any input on this, Karen?
Haven't heard from anybody. And I thanked Denise. She sits on land bank with me and took the time to do the research that I didn't have time to do, and I appreciate that. I've invited Mills Township to come to our land bank meeting. I mentioned that last we get our meeting, where I'll have some experts there. There can be roundtable discussion on how to handle this property. If it's been 20 years, another couple of weeks, in my opinion, would make that a few difference. So I, I would really like to, you know, reach out to them again and invite them to our next land bank meeting on August 17th, discuss the properties, discuss options between the county, the land bank, and the township as a collaborative effort to clean up those properties in our community.
Did not, there was a Mills Township meeting Tuesday, and I did not make it. So I don't know what was.
Is that daytime meeting?
Yes, 10 o'clock on the 17th of August. One or two of you from the board would like to come to the land bank meeting to, you know, ask questions and respond in the, to the township's request via county. That way we have county, township handling land bank efforts together.
Anything else on the Mills Township? Okay. American Rescue Plan update.
Okay, I'm going to start putting these on all of our committee whole agendas, because this is going to start to, start to get some momentum. Just overnight, U.S. Department of Treasury dropped another series of what they call their frequently asked questions about what's going to be eligible, what isn't, what are the reporting requirements, et cetera. I've not had a chance to even look at that yet. Tomorrow, they're supposed to have the final rules out, which is something we've all been waiting for, so that we can move forward with confidence. And I did want to point out that something is going on at the state level right now that I think amplifies consequence of not doing this right. I may have been reading about how something like 600,000 people may have to pay the state back some unemployment. And the reason for this is the state went ahead and issued or dispersed the funds based on some interim rules. Federal government changed their mind on a few things, and now some people may have to pay the money back. That's the exact scenario we're trying to avoid by not committing anything until we've got those final rules. Now, there are some things we've talked about that we know are perfectly fine, and, and those, that's still the case. But as we start to consider some specific projects, we're going to want to make sure that we have literally a checklist to make sure that we're going to be compliant. All that being said, I sat through a webinar this afternoon sponsored by Michigan Association of Counties and MML. And what their focus today was what we need to do administratively to account for the funds. With any grant program, there come reporting requirements, there come auditing requirements in this case, and a number of other things that we have to be, be able to document internally. One of the things that Michigan Association of Counties has done is gone out and has identified four firms that can help make sure that we're compliant with all projects. And this, their involvement could range anywhere from just simply doing some oversight on the accounting to actually assisting with evaluating projects and so on. I'm going to look into that a little bit more. I can tell you right now with the reporting requirements, I know the clerk and the treasurer's office does not have additional time. does not have additional time right now to be getting into some of the more detailed aspects of this. I certainly don't either. With, one of the firms that was identified is specifically already put together all of the templates to make sure every bit of compliance is met. So I'll look into seeing what kind of cost would come with that. And of course, the cost for doing that is money that can be taken from the actual ARPA grant to do it. So it's like an administrative component, which oftentimes you have with these grants. They'll allow up to like 10% for administrative or whatever that might be. Well, 10% of this grants a lot of money, so I'm sure we won't need to go quite that high. So that's, that's where it stands right now. I was hoping there'd be a little bit more to report, but certainly by the next committee hole, there should be a lot more to report because those final rules will be out. And this dovetails nicely into item C, which is the draft capital improvements plan because I think a number of items that we've identified there, particularly when you look at some of the items with the parks will end up being eligible for this. And Scott Bell's here to help walk through that plan, which is also loaded onto the iPads if you had an opportunity to go through those. Timing, you know, despite the air on fire workload issue that's going to come with this, the timing of it is pretty good for us just in terms of how we, our budget year and how the capital improvements plan has come together.
I see.
Scott, come on up now.
Come on up, sir.
I mean, I don't think I like this. I can hide behind that. I won't fit under there.
We're slopped.
Well, first off, I apologize. You don't have a very recent copy of the plan that was sent out. Amanda sent the wrong plan apparently. So I'll give you a stack of there and we'll go a stack here and we'll just let you pass them around. So there's quite a bit more information in here. The main component is the items that are in the capital improvement. And those are really what, what the whole plan is about. There's a lot of, we like to call it in the industry, fluff, things that support it, back it up, give you a little background. But the bottom line is at the end, the list of projects, their cost and how, how they're ranked and how they're spread out. So initially, we had started this whole program with trying to get a committee together to evaluate and come up with projects. That really didn't work. We don't have, didn't have a whole lot of support. Ogumah County is kind of unique in the sense that, well, you don't really have public water, sewer, that kind of infrastructure, the things that really get put into these capital improvement plans. We're kind of on the lower end of the spectrum, if you will, as opposed to like Wayne County or Oakland County that has tremendous amount of infrastructure that they have their plan identifying things. But we did go out to all the departments. We sent out a questionnaire, asked them long-term, over the next few years, what kind of major purchases would you be looking to make? And there, we did get some response back to that. And that is really what we have compiled that's in here thus far is those items. There's a lot of computer servers, things of that nature. That's the sort of thing that we received back. Remodeling of one of the courtrooms was one of the items. We threw a number in at that. And you're really kind of in this new one, you got to go way to the back to find that table. Patrol vehicles, larger purchases like that. But what I really wanted to get into on this, there, the first part, we kind of explained what the process is, why you have these plans. The plan is really there to identify these items, put them on a capital improvements plan for multiple purposes. One, it helps you keep in mind from year to year as you're doing your budget. This plan will be included with your budget. This plan will be modified every year so that it's constantly looking ahead five to six years as to what kind of expenses you can expect. And then they can be included in that budget. We defined capital improvement as an asset costing more than $5,000 or having a useful life of more than one year. Really, that's kind of a small dollar figure. Many counties use 10,000. Some have even higher figures, but for purposes of the plan, that's what we were trying to accomplish. The next section, page two, really talks about project prioritization. I haven't really gone through that, but part of this plan, and I think it's part of the requirements of the grant that we received that is paying for this plan, is we need to have a methodology to rank those, to score projects. And then we can prioritize them, make them high priority, mid priority, low priority, which, when you come to a budget shortfall and you don't have money to spend on these, it allows you to pick which ones are more important, which shouldn't be funded, which ones can be shifted down to next year, maybe. Then we go into the background portion, the various plans that the county has, the master plan. One of the things I do want to mention is really this probably, and we haven't talked about this, Tim, but this really probably should go to the planning commission for their blessing as well. Although that, again, the planning commission doesn't have much interest in patrol cars that are being bought or, or computer servers, et cetera. Typically, that is, these plans are formed under the Planning Enabling Act, which is the planning commission, which looks at development. So in the, in the case of water and sewer, roads, bridges, things of that sort of sense, that's how planning commissions look into that as to developing their zoning and how things will expand in the community. Again, we don't have a whole lot here, probably parks. We had a Parks and Board Rec meeting the other day and we talked briefly about this. We talked about some other improvements that we want to have. But one of the plans that the county does have is their county recreation plan, which similarly has this capital improvement plan within as a part of that, where we identified projects over the next five-year period. This was done 2019 through 2023. It's almost timed update again. But that, that plan included various projects and estimated costs and funding sources for those. I have done my very best to kind of, because I'm on the planning commission, I'm on, I'm on the Parks and Recs. Yeah, that's the one I'm trying to think of. I kind of have an idea of what's been accomplished on here and what hasn't. Obviously, COVID's kind of slowed down things in the process of doing things as well. But we do have some projects out there that are funded, primarily funded through DNR grant and donations from the West Branch Township NDA for the campground for infrastructure improvements. And the project is on the books. It's, it's, we're trying to do that now. So that should be included in here as well. The Ironbell Trail Master Plan, that was something, again, that was an EDC grant that we put together for the Ironbell Trail through Ogumah County. I think, I don't remember if I came to the, I think I came to the, to the county commissioners and presented that. That was a year ago or so when we first did that. Yeah. Yeah. You know, hey, that's totaling over $10 million. I don't think the county is going to have that kind of money to spend on trails, but it might be something that we, and I want to have some items in this plan because if funding does become available, we want to be able to leverage those grants funding to help implement something. If it's in this plan, it, it makes it viable and more likely to be selected for grant funding. So we're including, included the Ironbell Trail. We didn't really put any projects in here, but we at least mentioned it. Hazard mitigation plan, that's another plan that regularly you'll see. I'm sure they come in, when we were writing the master plan a few years ago for that, we, they were seeking FEMA funding for various things, repeater towers, sirens, things of that nature. But those kind of projects could also be included in here and probably should be. I do have a section in here on the indebtedness, just so you can keep in mind every year you've got bonds that you have to pay for and other financed things that are long-term, long-term obligations, that just kind of is a summary on what those annual costs are. Again, when putting that budget together, you got to make sure you have the money to pay for those. And these sections are kind of not in the order I'm going to have them in in the final report. But county assets, I had tried my very best to put together a list of assets that the county owns, various real estate property that I have listed here. I found another one yesterday. And that's a project that probably should be in here. The Transit is looking to do some work there and they were talking to me about having a survey done. When I pulled up the description, I said, hey, I didn't have that in the county's assets and the county owns that land, so it should be on here as well. And I had, I added that one on here. I'm pretty sure I had.
You have road. What's road?
What's road? Very good question. I don't know. It's a piece of property that's on the corner of two roads. I believe it probably was just a piece of property that was undevelopable and the road was cutting across the corner. And for some reason, they just said, here, county, you have this piece of property.
Where is it?
That particular one is up, wait, no, corner of Sage Lake and Richland Avenue is the one I'm thinking of. Well, there's the parcels up at the top that are the high banks over by Lake Ogumah.
Yeah, but I see all those. You just have road.
I just have road there. I.
Churchill Township.
Yeah, it's in Churchill. I don't know.
How do you know it's in Churchill?
What is the tax ID?
Okay, okay, okay.
I obtained this list from your auditors because they had a list of properties, which wasn't necessarily complete because they had, there's some of the things are funded different ways, but. Yes.
I've actually started to pull that stuff from equalization.
Awesome.
And I am putting together all the deeds and everything that go with county.
That'd be spectacular if you get that to me.
The high banks are out for them.
All right. Wonderful.
Do we hear more about this? Light Chamber of Commerce, do we actually own the property that Chamber Building sits on?
That is what the, that's, yeah, that's the way it appears. I didn't pull a deed, but the tax roll shows it being owned by the county, so.
Wow.
Interesting.
Yeah. I'm not sure what the agreement is on that and none of you were probably here when that was done, when it was done 20 some years ago or maybe longer. I don't know. There's a lot of things on here that are rather surprising.
Well, Denise, were you in the, I'm sorry. Denise, were you in the process of that last year? Because wasn't there something that we owned, the bank, something with the bank, I remember?
That was the annex building. And I just did it on that one building.
Oh, okay.
And I did get the appropriate stuff for that.
Wasn't the bank involved? Wasn't somebody else's name on it or?
The county never discharged or never provided the deed for the property.
Was paid off. Common mistake. You know, keep their fingers in that. So the majority of the property that the county, the county assets that are really probably of significant importance are the parks. But also on the next page, I kind of threw together a detailed of what I like to call the Ogumah County Building Campus, which is all the buildings that were right in this general area and your parking lots and your everything that's there. So I have taken, that's where most of the county's infrastructure is, is in these buildings and parking lots that are right here. And I have looked at, looked at those to determine some things. Replacement costs are one of the major things that I think should be included in this and should be thought of for planning in the future. Typically, you'd have a certain percent, 10% is a typical common number for the value of a building that is used for budgeting for maintenance purposes. In this particular case, I'm thinking more along the lines of major roof replacements, HVAC, things of that nature that will be, that are expected. Your heating units have a 20, 30-year life expectancy and probably the, some of the equipment that's here is, is beyond its life expectancy. Some of the roofs on some of the buildings were replaced a few years ago in the hailstorm. I think you had the annex, for example, they got a new roof on there. But overall, I took those items and summarized some estimated costs for replacement and came up with a total at the end of this of about, let's call it four and a half million dollars. I'm just averaging that, that's probably something, those items are primarily a 30-year life expectancy. So every 30 years, you're going to spend four million dollars roughly. Therefore, setting up in a capital improvement fund that would have money in it for when those things happen. If you spread that over 30 years, $145,000, $400, I'd just say roughly $150,000 should probably just routinely be set aside and put into that capital improvement fund. $150,000 more than you've got, but I'm just, this is a plan.
Okay.
It's not a reality. It's a plan. We aim high and hope, hope you get $200,000 a year in there. But if we did have those, a fund set up and granted, you don't have that kind of money to put in there. I realize that. But at least if you started putting money into an account and had a fund that's there when over at the jail, there's a problem with the AC and it needs to be fixed and it's going to cost 70 grand, it's not something that's a shock and comes out of your general funder and having to move things around in your budget. If you have that fund set there for those kind of improvements, it's there and you can utilize it. That is kind of what I had came up with replacement costs based upon that. We'll call it the campus of county buildings and properties that you have. And that includes parking lots, sidewalks. Right now, everything appears to be in fairly good shape as far as your concrete, your sidewalks around the building. You've done some work here, et cetera. So, but you know, you will be having some issues in the next few years with something. Something is going to go. The next section is describing the parks. Little background on the parks and why parks are an important asset. A lot of the stuff came right out of the Parks and Recs plan. But I did do a little bit of a detail on each one of these so that we could show some of the plans of what was planned and what is in our master, our recreation plan. The secret campground, as we mentioned, we already have a project ongoing there and there's routine maintenance going on there and upgrades being done regularly. Typically, the Parks and Recs Board is, funds the projects from revenues from the campground and donations that come in from the nature park and other places. So, and then grants and donations and various things like that, volunteer labor. They had very good work to be at the, at the campground earlier this spring and did quite a lot of work. So Parks and Recs were very grateful for all that, but there are, there are plans in the works. The infrastructure for the water and sewer that we have, or the sewer lines that are kind of showing on that next map. And you can see the future development that's proposed there too, where we have done some clearing in there and are getting it set to build some roads back through there. When the sewer comes through, we have it stubbed out there. We'd like to maybe extend that sewer on in there. But those are things that will be included in that budget at the end. The nature park, they've been pretty ongoing with their maintenance regularly there. We do have our new fenced enclosure that is being completed to expand. So we have more room for the deer out there. But we do need to replace the deer pens themselves. And we have a proposal out right now to try and get some funding for that. And those plans show up in the next couple of pages with the fence, the proposed fences there. That's an ongoing project and probably should be in here. There's a possibility there might be some grant funding that could help support that fence project as well. It's probably a good $50,000 project to do the fencing that needs to be done there. Friends of the Deer Refuge is a nonprofit that's probably going to pick up a good portion of that bill. We do regular fundraising at the deer park there. And, and we try or do our best to, to do the repairs that need to be done there so it doesn't burden Parks and Recs and/or the county. Pointer Hill Park is another one of those parks that nobody even knows you own. Well, you know, there's a cell tower out there, so you're getting some revenue from that. But it's an unknown park. It's not used. It's a little picnic stop with the Meyer property. Maybe that's something that might need some improvements, but it's not something that's been, it's not in our rec plan, but it might be something we'll talk about. The Ogumah Hills Recreation Complex is owned by the county, run by the Ogumah Hills Recreation Complex, or the Ogumah Hills, well, I think it's an authority, Recreation Authority, that funds and does all the projects there as well as little league. But it is a county park. It was purchased through the county through a DNR grant. So the county is responsible for maintaining and making sure that park stays in perpetuity as a park and keep it maintained as it is. Again, that's the Ogumah Hills Recreation Authority pretty much funds that and they, they take care of that. So it's not anything from Parks and Recs that we ever have looked at or done anything else. That leads into the schedule of budget here, the scheduled improvements that we have. So these that are typed in here are the ones that came from the various departments. And what we have compiled, as I said, I haven't ranked them yet or come up with a priority on them, but we have them broken into years. Each department has kind of worked through that, telling us what years these projects would. Each department has kind of worked through that, uh, telling us what years these projects would happen when they expect to need them. And that's what's shown on here. But there are some additions that, from the rec plan that are not in there yet. For example, on the first one here, the secret campground infrastructure project should be on here. Uh, we've got bids for two hundred and fifty thousand, but I'd expect we'll probably be closer to three hundred thousand when we get done doing things. There's some other improvements that need to be done to this. The shower building needs some repairs, uh, and, and there's a couple of other things, uh, now funding sources I mentioned, West Branch DDA has funded that, the DNR has funded that. And there's been great support with volunteers out there this year too. So hopefully we can keep that up to, to keep that project rolling. Um, the nature park fence, uh, I'm hoping that we can get the fence done yet this year for the deer pens. Just because fences are falling down, we're having problems with keeping the deer segregated and we kind of need to do that. Bucks and the does, we don't need them all breeding. Um, and the next year, twenty twenty-two, there's nothing really I want to add to that. There are some items in there. Oh, I take that back. I did put, um, I did put a couple of projects in there from the Parks and Recs Plan, the, the secret campground expansion and bathhouse. Might be a little premature to have that in here right after getting the infrastructure done because that's probably another couple hundred thousand dollars to do a new bathhouse and get the campsite set up in the back, the future expansion. But it's on our, it's on the county's recreation plan, so we should have it in here. Nature Park, one of the things that I did put on here at the nature park that wasn't is, um, we talked about it, the, the water line going over to the building uh, at Parks and Recs. Um, the well in the hall is starting to have some issues with some sand coming through it and it sets for two weeks without running. It has problems, so. As well as there's no heat in that building, um, we'd like to do some lighting upgrades, put LED lights in there, which you could probably get a grant for. But again, uh, probably a hundred thousand dollars that year for that as well. Last on, on, nothing really in the next year, very little there, but in twenty twenty-four, I think that's where we would probably put in. Um, the rec plan had it before that, but it's not going to happen until later. The secret campground has the, the West Branch Township DDA, the township owns the property in front of the campground. Um, and the DDA had talked about doing a pavilion in a small park up there, a play structure, a pavilion, a little picnic spot. Primarily, the campground doesn't have much of a playground there. Um, and it would provide a better, better playground for the campground. It would be close to the campground. It's along the walking paths that are there. And that's just a project that, that i- in the past, the DDA, West Branch Township DDA has suggested and, and has a project out there and, and that was in our, our, our recreation plan. I'd probably throw a couple hundred thousand dollars on that project in there too. Again, funding for that would be probably DDA funding, uh, donations and, and maybe some DNR grants for that as well. Other than that, that really summarizes what we've done thus far for the capital improvement plan. Um, as I said, we need to schedule, prioritize some of these things and we need to get some feedback from, from you folks and others. If there's other things that you know of, that should be included in here. Now is the time to add them in and the budget is coming up as well. I know that's one of the things, this needs to be included with that. So we want to get this wrapped up so it can be inclusive with that.
So we'll know more tomorrow when those final guidelines come out. So each, we're going to continue to put this on each agenda, correct, Lord?
And, and Scott makes a very good point. Under the Planning Enabling Statute, this really does have to go in front of the Planning Commission too. It just helps with coordination. Um, they may look at this and say, yeah, whatever, and move it on. But I think as the years go on, it's going to become more dynamic. I think they'll have a lot more to say as well, the departments, as we incorporate this into our annual review process. And I'm suspecting right now that when Denise is done with her research, we're going to have a few things to add, just in terms of properties and boy, you know, having all of that between one set of covers, I, I can't tell you how handy that's going to be. Uh, I didn't know we had a stockyard. That'd be really, you can talk more about that.
It's in my backyard when the cows come, I know it.
But that's critical.
So that's what our days now, at least it's not weeks long like it used to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really excited about this, Scott, and I'm glad that we've got you on board to do it because this would be my little toy all day and nothing else would get done if I was. Dear appreciate it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Is it possible to throw in some recycling into that for community?
Yep.
Because it's a big, big area that's lacking throughout the community.
I'm feeling we're going to be getting into that big time here in the next year or two. Yeah. As legislation is working its way through Lansing, we'll have obligations to do updates to that plan as well.
And that's the intent with this plan is it's, 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 it's a first draft. It's a first, first, the first one. But every year this is going to get updated. And, and like Tim said, I think the departments are going to probably look at this more so and you're going to end up with a team of all the departments ahead are going to get together so they can decide, really, that's the way it should be done. The project, the project should be prioritized by that team. They should look at everything and make those decisions. But until this gets moving along, I think after this gets moving along, people will see the benefit of it and it'll become more of an important thing and an ongoing thing from year to year. Any other questions? Comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, work.
You're very welcome. Look forward to getting it wrapped up and getting things done.
So we have the MSU Secretary Job Description. Thank you, sir.
Hey, Julie Darden's here. She's endured the entire meeting.
I, I don't know what you want me to add, but.
Just for Lord's benefit, um, this is part of the ongoing process of as some of these positions are being filled, we're trying to catch up with the job descriptions and getting them on the books. Uh, particularly as we hire new people, they have an idea of what, what is expected of them on the job. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Um, Julie provided an awful lot of guidance on, on what these tasks need to be. And that's, it's, uh, we've done this with the benefits counselor. We did it with the Planning and Zoning Administration already. So it's just following that same pattern of getting this, um, cleaned up and, and, um, some point, we're going to end up with a full set of job descriptions. It might take us a few years, but we'll get there.
I didn't see anything based on if this is full time, part time.
Right.
Doesn't matter.
The duties of the job and then the full time, part time decision will be part of the budget process each year so that that can be, you know, it's flexible. Uh, the duties are not, the duties are what they are in terms of what we expect of the job.
Yeah. Um, it's obviously a support staff person who shared amongst, uh, our staff. And, um, when we don't have support staff, staff, you know, either figure out how to get it done or work together on collaborating with projects. So we fill the gaps where we ha- have needed to and we've had, um, we've, we've had a little bit of a gap because of, uh, maternity leave from our previous secretary who, um, uh, has chosen to not return to work, but understandably, we're not upset about that necessarily in any way. Um, so we just, um, appreciate the opportunity to, by the way, Tim really edited it down. Um, the university likes long job descriptions, so, um, he really distilled it, um, into this description. So I'm happy to, if there's questions that you have about the position or how we use it, happy to answer it.
You're happy with the description, obviously, the way it's written.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we.
You don't have, you don't have any problem with any of those.
No, no, absolutely. I mean.
I, I didn't think you did, but I.
No, yeah, to clarify, uh, Tim, uh, pared down. Right, that we, we provided, uh, based on our recent hire that we did in Iasko County and pretty much the function of a county support person, um, it really, the, the venue changes. It's really, you know, it's, it's the similar job in Iasko that is in Ogama that it would be in Roscommon.
Okay.
And you're right, we, twenty hours a week, ten, we have people who sometimes work for us fifteen hours a week because we share with another department. Um, so we definitely make do with the resources that we have in terms of staff support and other things like that. Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
If you have anything to add to that.
Next time I'll be more controversial.
You promise?
No, no, I shouldn't promise that.
How reviews no removal bids?
You have one bid that came in and that was somewhat disappointing, but on the upside, it is the contractor that we had this year, who I felt did an outstanding job. The spreadsheet that you have in front of you, the, the figures that are in black are the current fiscal year, what was bid. And then twenty twenty-one, that's the, the bid that we're talking about now. You'll note the only change is right there in the center and that's the callback on the entire site, uh, per event. There's about a five dollar difference uh, for each location, uh, in their proposal. Otherwise, it appears to be identical. Uh, and I would suggest that that be moved forward to Thursday night.
Do you know what the total cost was last year?
I meant to look that up before we didn't do it. Um, but yeah, that's a notable number. I will find out and let you know.
The only thing I see there, uh, location six, if you go to the one, um, it's across from the annex. You folks don't use that parking lot across there.
It would be over, probably overflow, right?
Uh, I guess it'd be overflow. I usually see maybe two vehicles in the whole parking lot at any one time. Well, they've got the parking lot right next to the building, all the. I mean, it's, uh, paying a whole lot of money to get that plowed out and.
Yeah, we probably still have to from a liability standpoint. It must kind of be maintained, correct?
That's best. Make it a seasonal line, just close it during the winter months.
I mean, I just, I normally see two vehicles parked there and.
I would be interested to see what the total cost was and everybody was happy with theirs because this is the first time we utilized.
Right.
Um, was everybody happy with their services?
I certainly was. I felt they were always very prompt and even when we had snow going on during the day, they were here.
Good. I'm surprised. What's that other gentleman that, that did it for so many years? I'm surprised he didn't put a bid in. He was pretty upset over that. Yes, he seemed to be. Okay, is that it on that, guys? So we want a resolution for next meeting, Thursday? Uh, the high banks property review.
Hey, Denise, you threatened us with something there.
Look at that in color.
I colored for them too, yeah. And they're colored and they're coordinated with the tax bills. So I have to tax those for each one of them. So the county does own that property. And as you can see, this is the drive that goes there by KJAX.
Yeah.
So from there down right for River Trail on the west side of the dam.
Is this west as they go or is that on another page?
No, that goes right to the section line. So that's the section for Churchill Township. This is section that's the section line for section three.
So what's the different codes? I guess I don't know what I'm looking at.
It's the tax ID numbers. So there are four different tax ID numbers that the county owns there. And I colored coordinated it with the tax bill so that I can keep my straightness to which one is which.
So is there more parcels to the west?
No, no, no.
What, what's there? The river?
Yeah, it's right, right here.
That's the river going through.
So the county owns both sides then?
Both sides except that little slipper.
How many acres is actually there?
I don't know.
So who made, who's been maintaining this all these years?
Anybody and everybody or nobody. Sounds like, sounds like the town.
One of the things that Dave running came, he wanted money, he had volunteers to stain.
Right.
But he couldn't find anybody to buy the stain. And the question was, is who owns it?
So I remember when I was a kid, when they put those stairs in. So who did that?
If you, I don't know.
I just, I used to fish there a lot. So I suckerfished when I was a kid. So it's just weird to me that.
Guessing the township.
Huh?
Guessing the township.
I think it was like Soil Conservation Service got some grant funding or something along there. It was my reflection to help keep erosion down.
Are you there with children and shoes?
Don't ask me how I remember it.
They put the canoe kayak launch in there too.
And I kind of think probably they did that stuff. But I don't.
I haven't been out there. I have to make a trip out there because I'm sure by now there's needed maintenance. And I mean, if we own that, that's a steep, that's, and it's utilized a lot.
Well, the stairs in that are more to the, um, of the steep high banks itself.
Yeah, I know where they are, but I mean, still they've been there for years. There's got to be some maintenance needed. There's a liability there. There's a lot of people that utilize that a lot. People who fish, people who could do kayak, whatever tube.
Years ago, I was down high banks in Anargo.
So I guess now what do we do with this now that we know that we own it? What it, what is, what do we do?
Well, first thing we're going to do is put it in our plan. But we need to assess what's there and, uh, if there are liability concerns, get them addressed. But, um, just put it into the fold and just make sure that we are on top of it moving forward. I mean, we talked last meeting, somebody said something about mowing it. Well, we should probably be doing that, uh, among other things. So uh, it's just having knowledge that we own it, I think is the big step forward and then we'll figure it out. And it probably is part of our park system.
Did you get that?
I don't know. And I've got that list I'll be checking too. Very sure makes a good point. I don't know if it's on the list even, so.
Okay. So are we going to put that for an update on the next committee of the hall? So we?
Yeah.
Don't drop this, Paul.
We'll, we'll keep updating on what we, what we find out.
Okay.
We're still stuck on the stockyard thing that.
Anything else commissioners on that?
No, I guess I have to take the drive off.
It's really nice. Uh, gee, we have the KCC village. Said Greg had, um, and Tim and I had talked, uh, Greg had made a comment. Greg, are you on there?
It's named twice.
Greg? I see he's moving, so. I can't hear you. I think you're muted.
I am. Sorry about that. Good to press the button fast enough.
You're okay. I just, you had made a comment when this was first brought, uh, to your attention at a board meeting about the sunset villages being unconstitutional.
That is correct.
Now, if that's the case, and I understand in your research that, that some things had changed and you didn't know the Ogama County was, was not the sole representative or sponsor, I guess, of Kirkland Community College. So that changed that aspect, but as far as those sunset villages not, uh, being unconstitutional. Can we go forward with anything there with the villages that don't have a sunset?
So you're talking about, um, villages that are unrelated to educational, uh, facilities? Can we go, um, after and remove other villages? And the answer is yes, depending upon what the authorizing um, legislation was for creation of those villages. So if you would, if you would give me a list of those villages, I can determine whether or not, uh, the village was created generally. Uh, and in that regard, if it was created under a general statute, yes, you can attack. If it was created under a specific statute like we saw with, uh, Kirkland, uh, then it becomes more difficult because the attack, uh, is set forth in that statute.
No, my question was directly related to the Kirkland Village. Um, those, those, I believe two of those.
With regards to the Kirkland, are there other things that we can do to, um, uh, take care of ourselves? Well, first of all, um, the, uh, village that's going to come due in another ten years. Uh, I mean, one of the things that one should think about is how ten years prior did that village get passed? What were the, I, I think a historic understanding of why that village passed in the first place, because you have two. Um, uh, and that will help understand and that one does have a sunset and that one you can, uh, rid yourself of. Uh, there are some other technical arguments with regard to the first one that was created in nineteen sixty-six. Uh, uh, there, there are ways to attack that village, um, but I would prefer, uh, to have that discussion in a closed session meeting with the board.
Okay, a- again, I guess my, uh, we will put that on the agenda, but I, I guess still with, with the village, there's two villages that do not have a sunset. If those are truly unconstitutional, is there anything that we can do going forward with, is there anything that we can do going forward with with those two villages related to the lack of the sunset?
Well, first of all, I don't, I don't know that there are two. I know there are two Kirkland villages. One does have a sunset. The other one does not.
There's three, Greg.
Oh, there's three. Okay, I thought there were.
That's what, I stated that correctly. There's two that do not have a sunset.
Yes, you did. I would need to look at the other village. I did not look at that one. I looked at the one that created initially the school. If there is a second one that's created out of that same statute, the same arguments that we can talk about in closed session can be used and will be used by us going forward to attack that. But we cannot attack the constitutionality of that because it was not unconstitutional back in the sixties to have a village without a due date. That has only been a recent thing that has happened in the eighties where the courts have ruled that that deprives the citizens and public of due process.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put a closed session on the agenda going forward or to further discuss this with the KCC village. Are you guys okay with that?
Let me add that I was at Edwards Township meeting Monday night and Derek Rendon was there. And Kirkland was the main topic with her. She acted like she'd never heard about it before. But I said, can you get this on the legislature? And at least get it to get a sunset on this so that the voters can vote on it. If they want to keep it, they can vote for it, you know? I mentioned your, she's in her third year. Is this going to roll into a lame duck session? Oh, no, of course not, you know? You'll get right after it. Yeah. Yeah, that was met with a little laughter too. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to laugh. I tried to.
It's okay. Sometimes it's okay to laugh and giggle and smirk because if it's something like that, that's just exactly what it is.
Sir, many of the legislatures have no idea of of what you just spoke about. And and you saw that when you spoke to to her. And it's not endemic to male or female.
She did say that, she did say that back in the sixties, that was put across and all community colleges in the state got money through that means.
Correct.
So there's other community colleges out there with with no sunset villages. I don't know where they're at.
So that was not uncommon then?
That was not uncommon. That was something that came through the state in order to fund community colleges.
Have we sent, we extended invites out to them that we had talked about? Have we done that?
We have not done it yet.
But we will.
We will.
Okay.
We saw those little sticky notes on my desk.
I did.
I had to say, you know, a couple of things. I mean, you know, I mean, just like I said about this, this thing here, Kirkland is not going to roll over and just give this up. And when Mrs. Rendon starts looking into it, Quinn's going to come down and want to take, not down to Max's place like we probably would, but down out to the country club, you know? And you know, they're, they're going to fight to keep that as they can, you know?
It'd be interesting to see with back in the sixties, if any of those colleges have closed. What happened to to those villages that didn't have a sunset? What, what?
Be interesting, no.
I can, I can do that research for you guys. I know that there are a few community colleges that have closed in the last thirty, forty years. And, you know, there has been one technical center. I think it was ITT, I may have mispronounced that, that ran into forced closure because their loan to student ratio was out of balance. And what I mean by that is, is that they had a lot of students that were attending through government loans, but those students were not completing college.
So we'll put that on the agenda. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
And last, we have collective bargaining update. But beforehand, let's go ahead and do the public comment. That way, there'll be no business after we come out of the collective bargaining closed session update. This is public comment. This is a second of two opportunities for public comment. On December ten, twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution twenty seventy-seven to adapt rules of procedure that include a structure for public comment. Persons who wish to address the board are required to comply with the following. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. Five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrictions on subject matters. However, failure to follow the directions of the chairperson will result in not being able to talk or being removed from the meeting. The board chairbrin, chairperson reserves the right to sound the gavel when the audience applauds or derides a speaker. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we thank you in advance for your compliance with these rules. Public comment. Is there any in the room? No public comment in the room. Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment? Okay, I need a motion to go in.
Rules are the rules that you just read.
I don't think so.
They can be.
How about that? She does a very good job reading it and very quickly too. But let's, let's, let's.
That's a good idea.
Let's go another step and let.
Plus, because there's new rules that that will be implemented at the next meeting too.
Yeah.
So that's fair. Collective bargaining updates. We are going to go into closed session.
I'll make the motion to go into closed session to review collective bargaining.
I will support that motion.
Your motion, Commissioner Scott, with the support from Commissioner Serber to go into collective bargaining update. Can I get a roll call vote on that? Do I need to do that?
Yep, yes.
Gosh.
Greg Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serber.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbaker.
Yes.
Penny David.
Yes, so we're going to go into closed session at seven twenty-five. There'll be no more business when we come out of, just so that everybody's aware. Come out of a closed session.
Erin and Denise, you're welcome to stay if you want to, but you already know what I'm going to say. So it's up to you.
Good night, guys.
Whatever.